All right, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday, October 4th. At 6:03 PM, could I have a roll call thing?
You're muted, Teresa. Still muted. There you go. Now you're not.
I'm sorry. Teresa A. Morris present.
Sexton Duranian present.
And Veronica Calle present. Please join me through the plaid movement. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded and will be posted after the fact on the town YouTube channel. It is also logged on channel nine. For chairman's addition and deletions, we are going to delete the minutes for April 13th, 2022. They will reappear at the next meeting. We are also going to delete the section 4.3 town signage bylaw report. So that's all I have. I think everything else will be under the ASL reports for pretty much all of us. So those are our additions and deletions. No additions, just deletions. Does anybody have anything else?
No.
Madam Chair, I do not.
And Eric? No? Okay. All right. With that, is there any public comments? I don't see any hands, so I'm gonna assume none.
I think there's actually one. Excuse me. No, that's, oh no. Sorry. There was a hand there.
Okay, now I don't see any little yellow hands, so, okay. No public comment? I'm going to move on then to review and approve the meeting minutes for May 23rd, 2022, and for 5/31/2022. And these were in the share points in preliminaries. So do we want to do these one at a time, or what would we like to do?
I think it's easier to do them one at a time.
Okay, then let's start with 5/23/2022. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for 5/23/2022.
One second, Ed.
Any discussion?
Okay.
All right. All those in favor?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calle, yes. All right, and now for the 5/23. I'm sorry, 5/31.
I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for 5/31/2022.
A second.
A second.
So 5/31. Any comments on that?
I don't think we have any.
Teresa, any comments?
No, ma'am.
Right, well, then Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calle. Appointments and hearings. We have an appointment. Our hearing is not until 6:30, so we're gonna keep going and then come back at 6:30 here, so, all right. So is there a motion to appoint Lois Riddick to the West Townsend Reading Room Committee for a term expiring at the end of April 2025?
I make a motion that we appoint Lois Riddick to the West Townsend Reading Room Committee for a term expiring April 2025.
In a second, Ed.
All right. Any further discussion? During that, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calle, yes.
Lois.
Moving on down to the appointments of officials and personnel. We have three appointments, so starting with the fire personnel. Is there a motion for, to appoint Trevor Jones?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Trevor Jones per diem firefighter medic contingent on pre-appointment physical inquiry check.
Second.
Any further discussion? Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calle, yes. The second fire appointment?
I make a motion that we appoint Mark Patel per diem firefighter medic contingent on pre-appointment physical inquiry check.
A second, Ed.
All right, any further discussion? Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calle, yes. And then we have an appointment for Alana Rizzuti as the counselor for rec kids. Is there a motion?
I'll make an appointment that we appoint Alana Rizzuti as counselor for the rec kids, for the rec department.
In that.
Any further discussion?
Just, is this a paid position out of funds that the record department made? Or is this a paid position out of town, you know, expenditures?
That, it's, it's not part of the budget. It's from receipts for those participating in the rec program.
Okay, that's a question I was trying to ask very poorly. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anything else? From anyone? All right, so Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calle, yes. All right, so welcome, Trevor Jones, Mark Patel, and Alana Rizzuti.
Welcome, guys.
All right, so, community compact grant. Are we ready to talk about them?
Absolutely, now, Chair.
Would you like to talk about that, Eric, or Chad, or maybe both of you? I don't know.
Yeah, I can do it very briefly, so just kind of a bit of a recap on the on the budgeting best practices grant. The town did apply for the budgeting best practices grant, as we had discussed, for the ClearGov software. And that application was, has been received by the state. I've been in communication with the state about the application. They have not given us a result yet on that application. In interim, I did sign an agreement with ClearGov that allows us to, to to terminate it at no cost to the town if we don't get the grant. So we can start, they're willing to start at their own risk. The, getting the documentation from the town and starting to put it into their system so that we can have the backup financials for previous years to build.
Right.
So they're, they're willing to start to build at their own risk, and if we don't get the grant, we will, we will obviously have to terminate the agreement, but they're willing to do that. They're very confident that that we'll be able to get the grant. So that's where we stand with the ClearGov process.
And they upload all of that from prior public records, correct?
Yes, it's the prior, the prior budgeting documents that were
town meetings.
Yes.
Okay.
The community compact grant for the IT applications is due on Friday. We are working with Guardian to apply for a grant to to extend fiber from town hall to, to several, to the various town buildings. The town buildings that are included in the grant application are the library and senior center, the police station, the fire station, the central firehouse here, the West Townsend Reading Room, cemetery department, the highway, the highway department are the, the town buildings that are going to be included in that.
It'll go to the rec building too, yes? Next door to the rec building?
I will, we can add that. I will add that to the, I think it's on the same note, but yeah, we can add. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I don't know if there's fiber there already, but, but if there's not, I will, I will call them. I think we are connected already.
Okay.
Because of their, their IT, yeah. But I, we could double check that and make sure that the vendor can put that on. That's a very, very short run compared to some of these other ones we talked about. And so that, that patient is due on Friday, and we anticipate submitting it this day at that time.
Do we need a motion to sign?
I think there would, yes, a motion to, to allow me to submit the grant application.
Okay, so is there a motion to have Eric sign the grant application for the community compact IT grant?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Calle. All right. Anything more on that? I put the other one in because that was something that the efficiency and regionalization best practice grant, our planning board had mentioned something about that. Being interested in having the Board of Selectmen look at applying for that.
I will take a look at that.
And that's a best practice, and I think we can apply for two best practice grants. And the funds are, for best practices, the funds, if I'm remembering right, the funds are dispersed until they no longer exist. Until the state runs out of money.
Right.
However, for the IT, there's definite deadlines, so.
Yes. Yes.
Moving on to the public transportation task force update. There was a document that I wrote after our last meeting. Eric had suggested that we put the goals of the group or what we are trying to attain. So you can see that there are, our tasks are to determine what transportation is currently provided by LRTA. And how is it used by whom, same for Mark. How is it used and by whom? What transportation is needed by all segments of the community currently and in the foreseeable future? So what do we have a need for? I know that Emily, our community outreach coordinator, has some thoughts on that, data. So, and how might these needs be met by LRTA, by Mark, and by others? And then from that, we can determine whether we're going to contract more than that and flood life services and how the LRTA piece works. And so we will need a selectman representative, the community outreach coordinator, the planning administrator is interested. I figured a council and aging rep that could either be a staff member from the senior center, or it could be someone from the community. So if, if we're good with this, and then one other, I thought it's just nice to have five instead of four. Although, maybe it doesn't matter.
Yeah, for a working group, I'd hopefully.
It wouldn't matter. So maybe we should leave out the other piece of it. And we've targeted, there was a question about how much time would be spent on this, and I figured one meeting a month. You know, we assign tasks, everybody go off, figure out what you need to know and bring it back. So that's kind of how I looked at it, with the goal of getting things implemented much more fresh.
I think that's reasonable. Can I add one thing to the, to the list, if that's possible? Which is prior to any implementation, to, to talk with the ladies coordinator about MBTA communities implications, if any.
Okay.
Mike and I were discussing the fact that changing the transportation in town is a good goal, and we just need to know whether or not if doing that change is going to impact the MBTA communities category that we're in. And if it does, what would that mean for our MBA communities requirements?
So our first thing for MBTA communities is due in January. Since January 23rd, I don't know. I'm kind of making that date up, but I thought we had to, not acceptable.
Our, our MBTA communities' action plan?
Not the action plan itself. Maybe it is, yeah.
The action plan.
Yeah.
It's already done. Mike's already submitted it.
Oh, it's already submitted?
Yeah.
Glad to hear it.
So I, we just want to, I think, before we do anything on the ground, I just want to make sure that we do an evaluation of whether or not that impacts, or, I mean, it may not. We may ask the state, and they may say, oh, no, you're locked into whatever you are right now. Even if all of a sudden we put a commuter rail line down the street, you're still going to be an adjacent small.
I don't think we're doing it.
So we don't want to change that designation until it's locked in. So that's just something we need to evaluate.
All right, so, okay, so I'm going to remove the other from the, so there will be four people in this house. And our first meeting target is November 10th, I think it is. Day before Veterans Day. That's a possible for the first. All right, so if everybody's good with this, I will talk to Karen and the council on aging. I think they might have a meeting this week.
We can fire off something to them first thing in the morning. To Karen and just say, we're putting this together and actually be involved here.
All right, so I will edit this, add that line, cross out whatever. All right, that's all I had, unless anybody else has anything else on this. No? All right. We didn't 6:30 yet? No. We skipped 4.3. We'll come back to that at a later meeting. Town bylaw enforcement discussion. Of this, this came about because of the lighting bylaw. And the public lighting bylaw, which is what, chapter 95 or something like that, doesn't have an enforcement cap. So I had met with Alan during office hours to look at that, and we went through, he went through, and not so much me. All bylaws, we were wondering if we needed like a catch-all so that all bylaws in town could be enforced. And most of the bylaws have something in them. If it's not listed in, what is it, chapter 1.1 or whatever? It, it is within the bylaw itself. It just so happens that this one got passed over. So what you have in the share point is a potential article for a town meeting to just have the enforcement be similar to what we did for unregistered motor vehicles, which was in the same category of lack of enforcement designation. So that's what, so it's there. That's a possible warrant article for special town meeting. And it just states the building inspector, and let me get to it, so I can say something. The building inspector is the enforcement agent. And it, it pretty much, it's a non-criminal disposition. And it goes on through.
Very standard.
Yeah, very standard, follows what we've done for other bylaws. With non-criminal disposition. So this will come back when we see the special town meeting warrant. So this will be in there in the sign. Man. The other thing is, suggesting that he may, is that every, however many years, 10 years, seven years, 10 years, I think, that a town should look at all the bylaws as a whole and see if it still fits what we want. And given that we just approved the master plan in town, this might be a good time to do it. And he said, one thing that some towns do is all the boards just keep track of what they, you know, this is a zoning bylaw change. I mean, we're seeing some, I think, there's one coming up at our next meeting from the planning board. It's probably discussed last night. Do we want to tackle these piecemeal, or do we want to start a list of, these are things that we want to see? And then look at the bylaws as a whole. So it's, it's just food for thought. We don't have to answer that today, but it's a suggestion. So.
Yeah, he specifically was talking about the zoning bylaw, I think, being something that might need just to have a a refresh.
Right.
Because of different terminology, different realities of the world now than the way where this was originally passed, and things in there that just simply weren't contemplated. Things in the world that, there, there's no way we could have contemplated when the town originally passed that bylaw, and so it made doing them. A refresh of that would probably be a good thought.
And he said that a table is a good idea, but it has to match your existing bylaw. So, in, in verbiage. You know? So anyway. A lot of towns do take.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it, it might be time to look in particular at some.
Right, right.
So.
That's something, if we did, if we did rewrite this zoning bylaw, hopefully we'll be able to do it with a consultant.
Yes.
And the consultant would be in charge of that table.
It would be a perfect best practice grants possibility.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's.
I think it would fit. So.
I'm more than happy approving. I don't know if I want to be doing.
No, no, no.
Oh, yeah, the rewriting is, is a big deal. You really do want to have it.
Somebody does this profession.
Right, and there's people who, you do. Adam's old partner is one who does, we write about, it's
Oh, really?
Mark Grabrowski. He wrote a book on zoning in Massachusetts. He's like the guy who wrote the Massachusetts zoning book, so he.
Yeah, dropping names like that.
There we go. So it's something to think about, and, and we are probably do. We went back and looked at the last overhaul, and it was like in the early 80s or some such thing. It was a long.
84, 85.
Long time ago.
It's a long time ago.
So where we've done piecemeal, little bits here and there.
And you can, there are some things, that's good for lots of things. Because sometimes, like constitutional law changes, like signage, you know, it changed at some point in time. And if you don't go back and rewrite your own bylaw, you're not going to be able to stop with signage, so.
Well, historically, if we have had to, or I shouldn't say we, if the board or committee had to deal with a particular issue, and so you know, a particular bylaw problematic, then the next meeting, they, they, they've thrown
work to fix it, yeah.
Some to put it together. But I'd like to see that also with the, for instance, the master plan committee with the, the planning board to make sure that they're doing, you know, one chapter each cycle, as opposed to having them try to do all it at once. And I think that's what they're focusing on as well.
Yeah.
We need to be much more proactive in, in keeping up with this, as, as opposed to waiting five, 10, 15 years, and then have to rewrite all of it because it's just thirty years.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. We have five more minutes, so are we ready to go on to 4.5, the shared streets, bike lanes at the harbor? All right, so I put in for the select board to see tomorrow. We, the town have about $30,000 left, $26,000, $27,000 of funds left from the shared streets and spaces grant. And the Mast dot has agreed that we can extend it by the end, well, mid, middle of June, 2023. So the idea is to provide accessibility from, in particular, Ash Street to the rail trail, you know, at the harbor. So, and one way to provide safety, in particular for kids, who might be biking from that neighborhood to the bike trail, is to put in bike lanes. It makes people aware. So we have a community meeting tomorrow night to roll out what we're thinking. And a timeline with this is that we, we've been working with Kittleson and Associates again. They are funded by the state through the Bar Foundation to provide planning assistance to towns like us who don't have town planners. And they're wonderful to work with. They really are. And so they are the ones that have been doing the concept for us. And let me see, where am I going with this? We're hoping to have, get input tomorrow, have another pass of the plan that they sent out based on the input. By the end of October, we would like to go out for purturbance. And then get that back by December, early December. It takes what, four to six weeks, the purturement cycle, especially with the holiday in there.
Thirty days.
And and then do the striping in the spring. One thing to think about is there, I mean, we have a PFAS emergency in town, and therefore are, have a treatment plant running or in the works. The MICA review for that was today, and I attended, and in that process, I learned that there's going to be a water main put in along South Harbor Road, Ash Street, South Harbor Road, South Street to the Harbor Trace Point. And so the timing of the, of the construction of the plant will be in the spring of 2023 and summer of 2020. So we have to look at the time for getting the bike.
Yeah.
To get through there, yeah.
And I need, so I will talk to Dave at Water about the timeline for the paving. And hopefully we'll have an idea about that by the next time we have a meeting on the shared street jobs.
Yeah, so that's something I hadn't even thought about. So I saw that red water line going right along those two roads, and I thought, oh. Yeah, we're putting bike lanes there. So the good news is, we could have better-conditioned roads when we put down those bike lanes. It's a positive.
Yeah.
So anyway, tomorrow night for people at home, tomorrow night, and we're going to announce this again later at 7:00 PM. There's a Zoom. It's up on the news section, and hopefully on the events to there. And you can get the Zoom link there. And we are excited to roll it out for the town. So that's what this is. So I just put it in there so that the select board could see what, what we have in. It involves painting an island kind of at Warren Road for safety, so that a bike that's going from South Harbor onto South Street could pull over into that eye.
Right, the, the, the overall is to be able to have a safe entree to the bike trail from Timberland.
Yes.
That's the, that's the goal of this, is that to bring bikers safely from Timberland area directly to the rail trail.
That, that is correct. And so this is just a preview for you all. Attend tomorrow night at 7:00. Bill Rideout is presenting. All right. It is 6:30, so why don't we have Harrison on, and then we'll come back to the CBA. So thanks very simple for coming up.
So I know it's been a little since the last meeting we had on this topic. But I have answers to a few of the questions from last time.
Okay, before you start, let me just, for people at home, Harrison is here to talk about the possible redesign of the website. So.
The town's website.
The town's website.
I should have started with that.
Yeah, just so, just so people can know that we all know that what Harrison is doing, but some people are aware. So go ahead, Harrison, I'm sorry.
All right, so the questions from last time, so you asked two, and I have one from Teresa. As far as person profiles go, that's not a, a thing that Revice has in their system, so that's not something present there at all that we have to worry about.
It's not as problematic, it's.
No, it, it's, that's not, like, we don't have to do it the way seven plus has to do it. You also asked Veronica about what the content management system is made out of, and that's with Java. And it's not a particular framework, to my knowledge. And Teresa asked about being able to sync your calendar to, the, the town calendar to your Outlook, or the same thing could be done with your iCloud or any of the other calendar apps. And that is possible, and it's available for everyone by default. And that's, there's a button you can click to do it on the website, so it's easy enough there.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, no problem. So I'll turn it over now, actually, to Thomas Jean, who's our proposal manager with Revice. He's up there. I don't know if he has screen presenting permissions.
Dave or Hartley, can we let Thomas Jean's share screens?
Okay, I'll take care of that.
And he's going to do a demo for you guys to see what the system looks like. And he's going to do a demo for you guys to see what the system looks like.
All right, hello everyone. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
And can you see my screen? It should say revised there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I'll be respectful of your time here and I'll just go ahead and dive in. Feel free to stop me if you have questions. But I'll try to wrap up my portion of things here within about ten or fifteen minutes. And then whatever time you all have left, I can stick around for any, as many questions as you have. So uh real quick, just a little bit about us. We are, of course, revised. We're headquartered up here in Troy, Michigan. And uh all we do is build websites for government. We've been doing that for over twenty years now. Uh and a couple of things we do really well. One is our content management system, which I'll get into a little bit later here and show you what that's all about. Uh we update that system about four times a year with new features, so it's always getting better. Uh on top of that, we'll do a hundred percent custom design from scratch, so we won't use a pre-built template. We won't use a copy of another website. We'll design it exclusively just for your town. And then also we'll do a full content audit and re-architecture. So rather than just copying and pasting everything as is from your current site, we'll actually go through it and develop a much ideally easier site map so that folks can find what they're looking for uh easier than they can today. In terms of our client base, we've now launched about three thousand websites nationwide. All of them are cities, towns, counties, and villages, just like yourselves. Here are some of our cities. Here are some of our counties, and I'll try to show you a few of these as if we have time here today too. Now also with us, as long as you're with us, you do get tech support. Um our tech support's a little bit different. First off, when you call in, you should expect that we know you by name or that we learn it very quickly. Um also, the people that you speak with on our tech support team, uh they are developers themselves. So the advantage of that is that the person you're talking to is actually the person fixing uh whatever issue it is that you might have at the time. Uh on top of that, we have a twenty-four hour customer support portal. We have support at revise dot com. We have an online help center and we do retraining for free anytime. So as long as you're with us, um whether you get a new employee or someone on staff already just forgot how to do something, they can contact us and we can set up a training for them pretty quickly. Okay, so um real quick on the process. So if you were to move forward with a new website, we would do a, what we call a kickoff meeting. And in that kickoff meeting, uh you you'd meet with us, um myself, as well as one of our very talented designers here at Revise. Um they would then provide you with a mock-up of what we're proposing the website would look like. Here's one we did a couple of years ago, about a year and a half ago for Belcher, Belcher Town there in Massachusetts. Uh you'll get to review that design and you get to come back to us with as many changes as you want made. Could be color, could be style. You could say that uh you don't like these news items here. You could scroll down and say, get rid of the calendar entirely. Uh you could even tell us that you completely dislike the entire thing and we did a horrible job.
I'll do a quick question.
Yes.
So at the very first kickoff meeting, you have the mock-up already available. Is that what you were saying?
Uh no, well, we would provide that about two to three weeks later. The kickoff meeting is just intended to kind of go through other sites that you might like and and why. Um we'll ask you, you know, colors, what type of elements you want on the site, basically just get a sense of what you're looking for. Um some towns we work with have really no idea. They just know they don't like what they have. And then other towns are very specific on what they want. So usually it's somewhere in the middle and we're good at finding out what uh what's what'll fit into what you all want. Um now from there, we do as many revisions as needed. Uh this was the second revision we did for Belcher Town. Doesn't look like we made too many drastic changes, but we can. And then um usually most clients do about, I would say about three revisions. And then from there, they approve it. We code out the website. We add in our content management system and all the features that we include. Everything in this list, many of which I won't be able to show you today. Um we then add in all of your content, so we build out every single page of the new website. And we do training after that. Training is unlimited for as many people as as needed, for as long as they feel as necessary. Most people um will only need about a two to three hour training, but it can be different for anyone or everyone if needed. Uh and then from there, you get to decide when you go live. Um your current website should stay live the whole time unless that vendor, you know, randomly were to cut you off for some reason, but um other than that, we can make the the transition very seamless. And usually that process takes about three to four months, give or take. Um and then and then we go live, so. And obviously, there is no real cookie cutter process with the way we do things. Everything is really tailored to so to you all and and what's best for you. Um so we can speed things up, we can slow things down, really go to pace that you're all um comfortable with, so. Okay, well, real quick, I'm gonna show you a couple of features and then I'll end it by showing you our content management system here um with with the time that we have left. So one thing uh you you'll see with us is that we're constantly uh upgrading our features and those upgrades come to you um automatically as as long as you're with us. So one of those things we just did was our calendar. Um and this is just one example of what a calendar could look like. Uh in this case, we've got kind of a grid here to the left. On the right, we've got maybe the next upcoming four events or so. You can also have as many sub calendars as you want. In this case, they have three total. I think the most I've seen was fifty. That's probably too many, but you can have as many as you want. And then and then when you click view all events, it's uh all color coded. You get to pick the colors. Uh it's also searchable, so if you're searching for a particular event, um like a festival or something, you could type in the word festival here. And anything with that in the title comes up. Then when you click it, frankly, uh the events themselves just look prettier prettier uh than most calendars out there today. You've got a date and time displayed prominently, you've got a photo, here's all your information for the event. You can put your Zoom invite in here if you want to. Um your agenda can be right in there. It even has an interactive map here that shows the uh the location of that particular event. And it can be different for each of them if uh if you need it, so. Okay, um also we include uh what we call e-notified. Essentially allows folks to sign up for notifications through an email and or a text message if they choose. All they have to do is type in their email address, they then type in their phone number, and then they choose what they want to be updated on and where. The best part about this is it's totally self-managed, meaning you don't have to deal with folks um losing their passwords or needing to sign in for an account. It's just their email address and their phone number if they choose, and then it verifies it and they pick what they want. Um so very low workload on your side of things. And then final thing I'll show you real quick and then I'll briefly show you the uh content management system is uh, this is what we call our public service request system. You can call it whatever you want. Uh but it essentially allows folks to submit a request based on a map view here. Uh and those things can be anything from a streetlight being out to a pothole to my neighbor's grass is too long, in my opinion. And uh all all folks would have to do is click report an issue. And then they can either sign in or continue as a guest and I'm logged into the wrong one. Either sign in or or continue as a guest, and then they simply take this little dropper here and put it anywhere within the town. And the address updates based on where that is. Of course, I can also type in the address. Uh and if they're on their phone, they can share their location here and it'll input the address right there for them automatically. They then choose their issue.
We have a question real quick.
You might be answering it right now. Go ahead. How does it direct to the different departments? And I think this might be it.
Yeah, you got, you got me. Um each issue is you get to set who it's directed to and also how many people it's directed to. So like, for example, if a pothole, you could have, say, three people get updated uh within twenty-four hours if the first two don't don't deal with it. Um or if it's really important, you could have like ten people in a matter of eight minutes um updated um via email. Those folks can then respond to the issue both publicly or privately with or without a photo. So you can kind of pick and choose which ones um go public and which ones do not based on the sensitivity of the issue or that sort of thing, so. All right, and then just real briefly, I just want to show you real quick the uh the content management system. Because all of this can be really great and uh innovative and that sort of thing, but if you can't edit it and you can't easily update the site, it's kind of useless. So um what you're looking at here, this is our demo site. Your site, of course, will look different, but the editing will be very similar and super easy. So you just click login. You have a username and a password. And now you're in. And the very simple concept is you just go to the page that you want to edit. You click edit page content. And then you start making your changes. So you can have a page title. You can also have an activation date, an expiration date and time. And then here's your content. The content, um you can add photos, you can make them bigger or smaller, you can delete them entirely. Uh you can add in as many documents as you want. You just click this little icon here, click upload file. Find your file or upload something new. Click save, click continue, and now it's attached right there. Now, obviously, I did that pretty fast. We'll train you on how to do it, probably close to just as fast. Um if you wanted to send an email or text notification, you just check that little box there for anyone who is subscribed to the page. Then you click save and it's live just like that. Now, there is also a workflow approval process, so if you want to approve certain uh people's edits before they go live, you can do that. Um otherwise, you can just go live right away as I did there, so. And everything else on the site, regardless of how big it is or what features we include, is edited in a very similar, very easy way. Uh you simply click on the button that says edit near the thing that you want to change and start having fun. There is also a history log, so if you've ever um made a mistake or you just want to revert to something you used before, you click copy this version, it drops in, you click save, and then you're back to where you started. So it makes it super easy if you make a mistake or anything like that, so. With that, I'll go ahead and uh and stop talking. Um any questions or things you all want to see more of or?
Um I kind of want a tour of the agendas and minutes section. Like, is there a way to build an agenda kind of dynamically that and put um files in? Like for today's meeting, we have files that um support each of the topics we're talking about um with the goal being that the public could see it prior to the meeting. They could um look at it, so.
Yeah, quick answer is yes. Um and you can also, of course, continue to do it the way you are doing it if you if you prefer that way. But um basically, you would just come in to this uh area here. You would either click create meeting or if you've already created one, you just click edit. And then, as you can see, we've got topics like Pledge of Allegiance. Um you can reuse topics. You can copy topics from a previous agenda. And then when you finalize the agenda, whenever that is, maybe, you know, three days before, um anyone who's on the public subscription uh email list will automatically get updated that there's a new uh agenda available. And then they can log in and review it and take a look at it before the meeting if they want to.
And and how do you create that as an event then too? Or is it just the meeting?
So it can be a couple of ways. We can automatically feed the agenda into the event calendar or it would show up uh within your upcoming meetings, which I don't have any actually showing here, but it would it would show basically a listing of your upcoming meetings here. These are all passed, but you would see a a listing here.
That's a lot easier.
I would save.
So much time.
A ton of things back in.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then you can also have um can, we call them contributors. So anyone who typically contributes to your, you know, regular meeting agenda, as soon as you create the new meeting, they would get an email saying, hey, this agenda is ready to go, but we need your report added for the month. They would then come in here and be able to upload a file. Pick it from wherever they're, you know, needing it, and then it would upload. And then the clerk or whoever finalizes the agenda could review it, and then when it is ready, finalize it before it goes out to the public.
Wow.
Yeah, I really, that's a, yeah, and so i- i- it's not difficult to have it automatically pre-populate the calendar though, is it, Thomas?
No, depending on how you want the event set up in the calendar, but that's, there's ways around each each of those challenges.
And can you speak a little bit to the functionality of having the calendar automatically um populate? Like your Outlook calendar with the, I I don't know if you have the possibility, but um with all the meetings that are on the calendar and then you can accept tentative or decline, and then your calendar would be appropriately updated?
I guess I don't quite understand the the question. So you're saying?
Well, so like today, there were five meetings, let's say, on the calendar. Um and I'd like to be aware of all of them. I like to have them in the calendar that I typically work with, which is my Outlook calendar, which gives me reminders and whatever. Two, one, I knew I would definitely not go to, so that would show up on at decline. I would decline and it wouldn't show on my calendar. Um but one was tentative and then this was mandatory. Does it, does that functionality exist to sync with um either Google Calendar or Outlook Calendar to do that?
Yes, actually both Google and uh Outlook you can sync with. Um so you could have a filtered version of any calendar where, say, for example, it's just meetings. And then you can click export and it pulls them all into your calendar. And say there was one on here that you didn't want to attend, you could remove that from the, from what you've accepted. Um otherwise, you would pull in the whole filtered version of this calendar.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think she has a question.
I don't know what she wants. All day long, I don't know.
Any other questions?
Can I see a homepage? What does the homepage look like? Like, how the, how does news look?
It can look any way you want. Obviously, we'll we'll um, you know, discover that in the discovery and design process, but I'll just bring up one at random here. So in this case, they call it, this is Arcadia, California. They call it Arcadia now. That's kind of what they branded their news. So they've got like the key, most important news items here on the left and then.
Looks familiar.
Another one, this'll, this is uh City of Olympia, Washington. And they do theirs in this fashion. But um what we'll ask you is we'll send you a bunch of different examples and you can kind of pick and choose which ones you like. And then we'll design the news to fit your preferences.
All right, thank you.
All right, uh any other questions or?
No.
All right, well, thank you, Thomas. I thought it was all good information.
Actually, I'm sorry. I'm double muted here. Um just one more question. Do you find it's easier to uh start from scratch, kind of re-inventing your own homepage? Or picking one that you already have uh built out here, using one, you say, I really like the city of Quincy and modifying that. Do you have a preference on how to work with that?
So we don't copy any website, but we do ask you to tell us the three websites you like most and why. And that, so we do pull in different elements from the ones that you like. So it's a little bit of a hybrid approach of both of those. We want it to be most representative of of your town, so um that's why we try to make sure we're customizing every design we can for every city in town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I I want to ask one more question. How how many towns in Massachusetts do you have? Do you know?
I don't know the exact answer. I can get you that number. I would say it's probably two hundred or so or close. Over the years, about two hundred, maybe active ninety, eighty, ninety, something like that.
All right, thank you.
I think that includes uh my second round of reading. Thanks again to Thomas for the demo um and all the information. Um but yeah, that's all, but I have some more.
Thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you, Thomas.
Um so I I think what we need is, with my partner already, I comparison, civic plus, yes, it's part and on one cost.
We can, we can send out the the board members that specific just broke down very quickly.
Yeah, and then as far as spending goes, I mean, we we um budgeted for civic plus for the fiscal year. If we're gonna get started, you know, what do we need to do and is there a warrant article?
Yes, that's a compliment, I think, especially if we're gonna have them running in parallel while it's being built.
Yes.
So one thing, um it doesn't look like Thomas is here anymore, but I think the um one thing that's good about Revice is we're not paying for both at the same time. Once we flick the lights on for Revice, then then we start paying for it. But if we're, if we're paying for civic plus in the meantime, then we aren't paying for Revice at the same.
Not during the demo, we don't pay until it.
Mockup and the design and all that good stuff, we don't pay for that.
Once it's public, then that's when we start wi- with the um. Once it's public, then that's when we start wi- with the um. Yeah. And we can, I can send, or you guys might have the proposal that details how that would be split out. Um, but we can also side by side that with.
Did we receive that already?
You might have received it, we didn't go over it, discuss it. In a.
We haven't discussed that in a meeting.
Yeah, could you resend that then? Put that on the October eighteenth meeting. And get it out early enough that we can have some time for the gap, sure.
And I'll, I'll get something for you, the um, Civic Plus's original document and kind of a, a side by side kind of summary document, what it. The different timelines and costs look like. So that way you can review that with it.
Yeah, I also have a concern, did I hear him right? Did he say, I know he didn't have the exact numbers, but did he say he thought he had? At one point, like, up. On and off around three hundred, but now he was down to under a hundred?
He said, he said, uh, maybe around two hundred.
Over the years.
Over the years, and now active ninety.
And do we have any, any um. Any idea like why, it seems, like I said, it looks very impressive to me, what I'm looking for, but do we have any way to get? Uh, uh, knowledge on why a community would have chose to stop using, what problems they had?
We can certainly look into that, um, I did reach out to a handful of references. Um, and they seem to have an overall positive experience. Um, and I, I think um, a lot of the time-saving features and functionality that we would see from this. Um, you know, I, I'll certainly look into what negatives.
I think, I think his numbers are up, I think, to tell you the truth, that seemed a little, like, half of the. His clients are gone, and the way it sounded, the way he was saying it, so that may well.
I, I think the way it probably is, 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 you know, over the years, you might have towns, you know, maybe it, when your contract is up, you might. You know, go out to bid, or maybe not for this low of an expense, but see, you know, what costs more or less, if Civic Plus costs less, and if we're budget conscious. Then we might switch to them, um, you know, I, I think that's probably what it boils down to.
Yeah, that, the, the reality of what we've realized is. There really are three options. What we have, which is the like, super basic Civic Plus, that's the cheapest municipal website out there. Which has a little bit, it, it functionality is not as. Easy as, uh, yeah, yeah, robust is a good word. We have something like Revise, which is slightly more expensive. Uh, which has enhanced functionality, and then there's the Civic Plus kind of like Cadillac. Which they have out there, which is more expensive. Um, uh, which has a lot of functionality. I don't know, I mean, it, I, I don't know whether it has more functionality than Revise or not, it's just completely out of our price range, it's not.
Right.
Well, I think, number one, it's in our price range, but number two, there's um. There's the customer, the, the customization that we need, especially bringing on some of the billing. Um, some of the other um, software that we're trying to incorporate in it, that's why I think it's, it's. It's really, because we can't put it into what we have now.
Yeah, and that, I know that with some of the, the, so, the. Things that they use in that system, like that text editor for their content management system. I know we can put custom HTML into that, and have it present what we want it to, you know, and really get into the, you know, the low level. Um, you know, we could probably embed JavaScript into that if we wanted to use something fancy, so.
So it, it's, I think it's much more com. It's more along the lines of what we're looking for, I don't want to go to something new and not be able to do what we want it to do, I think, yeah, this, this is.
And the other thing, which I know we've mentioned before, which I, Thomas actually didn't mention during his presentation is. In year four, there's a free. Upgrade, I like. Which is. I mean, that for free, that's kind of a big deal. Uh, do we? Anyway, that, we will get you out the um, the uh, the details and.
And maybe a potential timeline.
Will do.
So, you know. Um, given acceptance and special time, and we should be beside those.
Thank you, Harrison.
Thank you, Harrison.
Why is that not?
Wasn't there last name, you know?
Yeah, I was just about to say that, I'm, don't have any information on it.
Uh, is there any communication? It's the, uh, except on Route sixty-one Book Line Street, it's the old, um. It's the property that has the uh, little cottages. And the storage facility. I know I looked at it in communications, that's probably my fault, you know, I don't have internet. Um, and the question is, is it? Possible to move it to the eighteenth, since we haven't had time to review? Since we haven't all.
Do you think it's in communications you're seeing?
I know, I looked at it, I, I read it.
Secretly wanted it on the eighteen.
Well, it would have been in September, if you look in the September folder, there it is. Looking at it, it's the first two in the September communications folder. Um, it was put there on September twenty-sixth. Um, so let me just look at this. See if I can get the dates.
September what?
September twenty-sixth.
Communications. On that date. So I probably looked at it in communications.
The September seventh or the September twentieth meeting.
It's not in the meetings.
It's in the communications under September, you probably looked in October.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I want to see the date, but the. Return comments prior to October nineteenth. Um, so.
We could still do it on the eighteen.
We could do it on.
You have to turn the comments around very quickly.
Alright, sorry, you guys. Uh, so let's move this to the eighteen.
I apologize, double check to make sure it was there.
Yeah, I thought I had looked through everything, you know, why I didn't create a folder for it. That's why I probably read it and um.
Yeah, that's.
Put it on here and didn't create a folder.
So, I gotcha, okay, CBA referrals was.
It's a top two, and it's a, I mean, the first two in the list.
Yeah.
And then we should be able to get it to the, to the board the next day.
Yeah. So, and now, if you guys kind to read it, I, I have read it, but I read it last week when I was. I'm sorry.
No, that's, I, I, I apologize.
But I got the rent kids.
Yeah, yeah, you did.
So.
Hear that Emmy, we took care of it. No, but she'll see it on.
Some day she'll.
Alright, Arpa Projects, I don't think I had anything for that, that's a standing. In case something comes up.
Just in case, yes.
Alright, Taliban Stater, update some reports.
Yes, okay, so. Thank you, Chair, um. I had several that I wanted to go through, um. Uh, and I will try to do them. As briefly as possible, um. Um, number one, uh, we have a signed lease agreement for the soccer fields. Um, so we just need to, and I, I, so I will be looking for a, uh, we either. How, also vote to have the. The um. The board sign it, or you can vote to authorize me to sign it, we just need to, I think, get these signed and turned around, it's, it's up to the will of the body, but.
I, I think we should have a motion to sign it, us. So, uh. So is there a motion um, to sign the uh, lease agreement for Squanacook Meadows out of session?
I'll make a motion that we squi- sign this lease agreement for Squanacook Meadows out of session.
Second.
Um, any further discussion? Alright, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa Moishis.
A sextinarianian, yes.
And Brian Patel, yes, okay, yeah.
That's number one. Um, um, number two, we, uh, as the, uh, the Town Properties Committee and the Board. Had voted on um, for the, uh, the Commonwealth project to put the, the um. Plaque at the, the, the memorial out, uh, at the common. Um, so I met with the gentleman, um, who, um, is behind the project today, actually. Um, he had submitted, um. Uh, details about, um, the. Um, kind of the look and the shape of the specs of the, uh, kind of like a headstone in, in, in shape. Um, about three feet tall, and about a little bit less than a foot and a half wide. Um. Um, included in the sharepoint is a photograph of another one that they did. Um, at a different location, and the spec sheet that he had submitted. Um, under the Town Administrator's Updates.
Uh, screenshot it says.
Oh, okay, yeah. Um, so that's kind of generally what it looked like, we went out, uh, to the common, he and I. To try to look to see if there might be an appropriate place to put it. Um, given the. Um. The Memorial Day, uh, um. Uh, events that take place at the common, um, and the location of the flagpole and of the other large memorial there. Um, we did think that that end of the common probably made the most sense. So that it could, that, that this placard could be included as part of the, those, uh, events. Um, and tentatively, um, based on looking at the space, it looks like a, a good place to, to put it might be. Um, if you're familiar with, uh, if you're standing at one nineteen and looking down the common toward the bandstand, you've got the memorial. Front and center, you've got the flagpole, to the left of the memorial, and there's space in between the flagpole and the sidewalk. And you could put it about halfway between the flagpole and the sidewalk, and it would be about equidistant from the flagpole as the more, large memorial is now. But still off the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Um, um, uh, and so tentatively, I think we thought that would be a good place for it. When folks are gathered at Memorial Day. They would be looking towards it, it would be kind of in front of them, um, the wording is going to have, uh, the gentleman's name. Um, uh, where he served, when he, uh, died in combat. And the fact that he was the first citizen of Townsend who died in World War One, to die in World War One. Also, in World War One, and so I think that would, that sort of. Um, would kind of bring to light everybody why his monument would be there. As the first town resident of, of serving. Give his life in World War One. So the next, um, steps are going to be, they're going to work directly with the, um. Um, whoever's doing the headstone. Um, and once they have the specific specs with the writing, you know, we're going to come back and bring that to the board of selectmen. And we'll, um, kind of print up an aerial photo of the, of the, um, the common with a location for it. Um, I also want to kind of, uh. Touch base with the cemetery and parks and make sure that they don't have any concerns about that location, I don't know if there's a irrigation system, I, I just want to touch base with them and make sure that they're fine with that location as well.
Yeah, Eric, um, I'm sure you did, but. There's, I know you know, there's a bunch of events that take place along the, where tents go up. Along the walkway, so you do want to make sure, they're, they're only allowed, uh, twelve, twelve feet. But you do want to make sure it's twelve feet back, so you don't get in the way of, of. The bandstand events and the, the, the pre, the uh. Fall festival and tho- those type of ones, because those will have so- something twelve feet back.
Okay, that's good to know, we can, we can make sure that that distance is in there as well.
Because you know those crafters, they don't want anything in their way.
True, um, and so that's the update on the come off. Uh. So, a, a very quick update, we had spoken about this a while ago, which is. Um, working on, um. Uh, getting some potential information on retiree health insurance. Uh, it just so, uh, happens that we managed to dig up a report. From KMS Actuaries. That former Town Administrator Andrew Sheehan had done back in December of two thousand eleven. On this specific topic about retiree healthcare, and so, um. Uh, the information is enlightening, although not up to date, obviously, so I reached out to, um. The actuarial company who performed this report. Uh, and they're going to send a proposal to update it. Using current town information, so hopefully we can have this turned around. You know, I, 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 I told them I was hoping to have it, you know, sometime in mid-November, and they said that wouldn't be a problem to get a report on. Um, the actuaries for, for, uh. Retiree healthcare, and I'm also going to ask them if they have any, um. Suggested best practices about, uh, an OPEB trust. Um, to set up to pay for all the retiree healthcare, um.
Which is important.
Um, and, and to make sure that it's paid for, kind of like going forward to fund the trust, if there's an amount that we could. Could, you know, put in, if we, if we, if we front-loaded it. And let it start accumulating interest. While our payments will be very low, because we're going to have very few retirees. How long would that last us, and hopefully they'll be able to give us some sort of a, an idea if we can. You know, about funding that trust, and what we would need to put in every year to keep it going.
Alright.
Uh, so when I get that information, I will let folks know. Um. Uh, okay, so we have. This is a little bit. More challenging, we have two issues that have come up. Um, with Melanson. Um, and there are two separate roles for the town right now, so the first is, how do we do with. Their audit of the, uh, FY twenty-one financials. And based on, uh, federal funds that were passed through to the town in FY twenty-one, they have to do what's called a single audit. It was contemplated in their contract that there, there's, so there was a specific cost in the contract if they did have to do a single audit. And based on the information that they were provided from the town, um, uh, we expended sufficient federal funds in FY twenty-one to do require a single audit. Um.
Okay.
It's a that.
Federal funds. So, would be.
CBG and CARES were the bulk of the federal funds that we expanded that year.
Want to audit on CBGG?
What's it, it's a. No, it's not an audit of CBG, it's a single audit of the.
You have more than seven hundred fifty thousand in, um, federal grant funds spent. And we did about four hundred thousand with CBGG.
Yeah.
And three hundred fifty-three or so.
Something like that.
Was CARES Act.
Right.
Um, some of that, I figured out mine. Body sensation, I found old. Emails, and it looks like so. If, there were drawdowns, um, that were done in early July of twenty twenty-two. And it's part of, it's in, you can kind of see it, um. Well, I have, I have some. Stop on. And that's what made it, when I looked at things in June of twenty twenty-one, it was lower, it would never have been anticipated. Both from CARES Act, because we had not filed for CARES Act expenses. In March or June of twenty twenty-one.
Right.
And so that came up after the fact, once Terry got in. And, um, started working, uh, and these things. We need the audit.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so we need, so it's a, a single audit, it's required, it's a federal requirement, the, the cost is thirty-five hundred dollars. It was contemplated in their auditing contract, and they just let us know that based on these numbers, we are going to have to do it there.
No, I'm, I think, I'm. I think we should have it.
Now, um, what. We will have this come up again because of Barca funding. Um, because we will more than likely expand seven hundred fifty K, not in FY twenty-two, but probably in FY twenty-three.
So we need to.
No. With ARPA, you can, um, if ARPA funds are what take you up there, you can use your ARPA funds for a single audit. And the contract with Roselli for FY twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four uh spells out the single audit at three thousand dollars.
Okay.
The Melanson didn't spell it out. They just, in their re- um re-upping letter for twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, for, for, for the audio.
Twenty twenty-one, they specified thirty-five hundred.
Okay.
And they did not, in the original contract, the single audit wasn't.
Wasn't in there.
Wasn't directly in there.
Okay.
So indirectly, yes, but not directly.
So that's a, that's something that we are going to, well, I, I talked to, to Zach via email, and so they're going to be doing that single audit as required.
Okay.
Um, in addition, um, with respect to Melanson's accounting services, um, uh, it turns out that they are going to exceed their thirty-five thousand dollars that we had set aside for them for the closeout of FY twenty-two. Now, that was in their, in their agreement with us, they, they did just provide us an estimate of thirty-five thousand in our agreement. It was not a cap, it was just an estimate. They estimated that it would be thirty-five thousand. They have indicated that they're going to exceed that. There were unfortunately quite a bit more reconciliation that, than they, they thought that some of the months had been reconciled between the accounting and the treasurer, and none had.
So where, where are we at with that, though, now?
With the, they're still working through the closeout of FY twenty-two. It is not complete.
So FY twenty-three reconciliation has not begun?
I will, I, I'll have to check with, with uh, uh, I, I believe that they've been doing that in parallel, working on the closeout and while they're reconciling going forward, but I'll have to double check to make sure that that's.
Um, okay.
So we will need to identify funding to, to finish the closeout of FY twenty-two.
So its salary doesn't have to come from the salary line? Um, in other word.
I'm sorry, no, I, 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 I missed what.
Or is this considered salary, or is it considered? Um.
Services.
Services.
I mean, so thi- this is services. We the thirty-five thousand was encumbered from prior, from last year's.
Right.
We, we encumbered it and, and, and put it into a i- i- into an encumbrance that we've been paying the Melanson bills for the.
Right, will we be able to pay for it in the, the salary for the accountant?
I, we've been paying for Melanson out of that accountant, out of the salary line for the accountant.
Right.
Because that's the service that's being provided, is in lieu of the salary.
Right.
That's how we've been paying for it this year. So we could pay for it. We will be in deficit at the end of the year. But we already knew that, because there was only eighty thousand dollars in that line, and the FY twenty-three accounting service is ninety thousand.
But we did set aside, we took it from free cash, I thought, with thirty-five ten, the encumbered one.
We didn't take it from, well, I mean.
I thought we took it from free cash.
Well, what, it, you know, we took it from money that we had left over at the end of the year. It wasn't free cash yet, because we knew we were going to spend it on these things. But yes, it was money at the end of FY twenty-two that we.
Okay, I, I need to look at some stuff.
Yeah, because that, that was um we knew we were going to have those expenditures. We made sure there was sufficient funds in the accounting, in the accounting department's line to be able to encumber them so that they wouldn't be rolled into free cash.
Right.
I thought it, I'm going to pull up one, I'm going to find my ATM budget, um.
Because we had not entered into the account with, with, into the uh agreement with Melanson until after the town meeting.
Um.
And I would love it if there was m- m- money, e- e- extra money for this, but I, I I don't think it was accomplished at town meeting.
Well, it was still, I know that.
Do you have a date on that? So it was known. We knew at town meeting that we would need this, because we already had the resignations on the interim treasurer.
Yeah, so this was signed by, on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, with the agreement with Melanson. I know what all happened with the, 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 before I got here on the sixteenth, Ross had already reached out to request.
Yes.
Um.
That was already in process.
Good, so the, the question. I guess this is not something we necessarily have to answer tonight. I'm just kind of putting it on the
Okay.
on the board's radar that, um, you know, we, we do have this extra expense above and beyond the thirty-five thousand.
Do we have an estimate for how much?
So in their, in their information, they said they do not anticipate it going this high, but they said we should put aside fifteen to twenty-five thousand extra. So um, I think the, the estimate is, is between ten and fifteen. But that, that was what they suggested was between fifteen and twenty-five thousand we put it on. So all that being said, I don't, it doesn't require any action of the board tonight, and I can certainly investigate the, you know, the, the town meeting, the, this, the town meeting, and happen to see if there was something that I'm currently unaware of that was, was to anticipation of this. Um.
Okay.
But I will, um, uh, you know, I, before next, before the next meeting, I'll try to get it more detailed. Hopefully they'll be further along with this and closer to the end, uh, and get a more detailed number from them. Um, so they will know in our preparations for going forward too.
So is um FY twenty-three accounting work ongoing, or has it not been touched yet?
FY accounting work is ongoing.
And that is also coming out of the accountant.
Line, I guess.
Fine.
So Laurie, who is acting as our accountant, is not the, oh, i- is, is not the only person at Melanson who is working on our accounting service. She's primarily doing FY twenty-three. There's other staff that are primarily working on the closeout of FY twenty-two. Other staff from Melanson that are primarily working on the closeout of FY twenty-two, including Laurie.
We have those from them?
Absolutely.
All right.
So that was more of an informational, um, as we go forward. Um, and the final piece that I wanted to, um, well, one of the final pieces I want to touch base with folks is something I did include in the sharepoint, which is the um MOU between the town and TCAM.
Right.
Um, and so it's two and a half pages. Um, it has been, um, as I mentioned earlier, going back and forth between both parties. I do believe it provides the town with the, um, the protection of the services that the town's looking for while allowing TCAM to, you know, rev up their operations and, and get going, which I know is something everybody's in the um, ready for, w- 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 ready to have, just to get started. Um, and Chad did, and I have talked about it a couple of times about the specifics of the MOU.
All right.
No, please do.
Parties also agree that as installation of video drops using existing blank fall within the TCAM technical obligations under the grant agreement. What's the blank?
We're reading that.
This is shade, chase three.
Phase three, yeah.
I'm supposed to be filled in by them, I apologize.
I'm trying to figure out what the word should be.
Yeah.
Using existing cable? I, I, I don't know. I mean, what, what is that word? Um.
Steve is on.
I am on. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just having a little bit of internet issues. What was the question? Maybe I can help?
It's in phase three. Um, it's a, it's a sentence that reads, um, in the paragraph that's, uh, that's under the bullets, "The parties agree that a new quote shall be requested from Comcast to incorporate the entirety of the proposed work." "The parties also agree that as installation of video drops using existing blank fall within the TCAM technical obligations under the grant agreement, TCAM shall communicate with Comcast directly on these matters to efficiently implement these installations at TCAM's expense." What's the blank?
I, I think that has to do with the, the drops, Madam Chair. So there are, I believe, like we had talked before, there is drops that are, are already, um, I guess, not in place except for town hall. You know, but they're slated for the West Townsend Reading Room, the high school, the, um, the library, the senior center. I believe that's refers to having, having a drop, but I think it's the blank is where the drop would go, which would be two twenty-two. I'm just having trouble pulling it up. Again, I'm having just, really, I'm having, now it pops up unstable again, internet issues.
Um, I can't share screen. Um. Partly, or Dave, if you're there, can I be given the ability to share the screen?
Hold on one second. Hold my email real, oh, I can't, actually, I can't.
Big masking. What's the blank?
I, 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 no, it makes sense there. I understand what Steve is saying, but what makes sense there?
Okay, Rodic, I think you have it.
I've got it now. Um.
It would be equipment or systems or locations, locations.
I think it's locations, because again, we, like we discussed before, uh, the parties agree that, I see it now, okay, the party, in the course of request, call, incorporate the tiny, the proposed work, the parties. I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Placement?
Yeah. Existing placement fall within the T, yeah, or locations. Again, there, there's five drops that in, in the town only utilizes honestly one of them right now. So, again, it goes back to what we discussed before. Um, the technical obligations is we're going to make sure that that town hall is, never comes offline. So that's always going to be that fiber optic cable between two twenty-two and town hall. So either that's using existing, um, locations fall, yeah, I believe that's locations. Or it should be equipment, that's equipment. Now that I'm going back on, I finally got to another, that's equipment.
Existing equipment.
Yeah, that's equipment. I'm sorry, I, I just saw, I just found it on the other one now, that's equipment.
Right.
So we have to have the equipment, and it does, and I think Chad, you brought this up before, where you have analog um on one system and non-analog on another. They actually do communicate with each other. We checked that. So we don't have to upgrade, you know, town hall to, um, we don't, we don't have to update. The, the fiber optic cable is going to allow it to communicate.
All right. This looks reasonable to me. Um, and everybody agrees to it, right?
Yes, this is, as I said, the, the, they got this from TCAM's council, although they haven't seen the addition of the word equipment, so they probably want to charge TCAM to argue that.
Yeah, I just texted, I, I just texted council and said we added word, don't charge me.
Yeah. There you go. That works for me.
Um, yeah, I think, I think that this is a, a, um, I think, the, the, a document that both parties are comfortable with at this point. And so, um, the reason I bring it up is because I would request the board's selectmen authorize me to design the MOU with TCAM if it's in the board's will.
I, I agree. Is there a motion to, um, uh, designate Eric as Eric Slekel, our town administrator, as the, um, signatory for the TCAM MOU?
So moved.
To beat Teresa, she's trying to find her mute button.
Hey, I was close to it. I was getting closer.
Is that a Teresa Moore's second?
Yes.
All right, um, any further discussion?
No, Madam Chair, Eric, once approved, I'll come down tomorrow and sign. You know, I'll, I'll, I'll make arrangements with you to sign that.
Okay, that's great.
So we need, we need a vote. Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa Amois, yes.
A sexting duranian, yes.
And Veronica, yeah. Okay, so Eric is our signer, and we can get that in process. So thank you very much, Eric and Steve. For coming here to present.
Uh, let me, uh, there's one of the, well, there's a couple of other things I just wanted to mention very briefly. Uh, after discussions with the clerk's office and with the moderator, um, we've determined that December thirteenth will be the date of the fall town meeting. And I checked with uh the clerk, with the moderator, and with town council to make sure that they were all available on that date, so you know, locked into December thirteenth.
So moving down just very quickly, the block with button, and then we'll come back to you, Eric. The fall meeting dates, then we will have no November twenty-ninth meeting. Because we don't need that, though.
Yes, we didn't. We only moved it, so because.
Because of, December sixth, or whatever. So we will have a regular meeting on December sixth, but December thirteenth, special town meeting, and December twentieth. And then we have the two November dates. If you're either first.
First and the fifth.
Okay.
Um, um, uh, between now and our ne- and the next meeting of the board, we do have the first uh budget summit with the school department that Chad volunteered to attend. So we will be meeting with the, the members of the other uh towns and members of the school administration uh with the budget summit, I believe that's on the seventeenth.
Yes.
Um.
Can I, uh, will I mess up your train of thought?
Absolutely not.
Um, did we get anywhere? There was a school committee meeting last night, I believe, October third, and it wasn't listed on the calendar. Have we gotten anywhere with, um, our
Thinking.
with getting the school committee meetings posted on the town calendar as opposed to just the, the, um, school calendar?
I don't know that we've heard back from the administration on that, yeah. We will double check.
If not, I'm going to just start posting with the link to the other calendar. So, okay.
Could put that on Harrison's desk.
I will do that. Okay.
Steal them. Um, uh, I know that our last meeting, it was up in the air when the current land use coordinator's last day would be. Unfortunately, it is Friday. Um, so, um, we wish Mike well. He's done a great job during his time with down. Um, and he will be missed. Um, and he will be missed and as of next Monday, we will be, uh, short staffed in the land use department, but we have started, we have posted the position and I've already gotten one applicant and hopefully we'll get several more in short order. Uh, I'd like to have a good crop, so we can start doing interviews.
Yeah, that would be great. We'll need to think about an interview team for that.
Absolutely. Um, well, we, we might want to talk about that because ideally we would be interviewing before the next
That's true.
Next meeting, um, I'd like, if, if we get I don't want to just do one, but if we get any more candidates in the next week or so, I would like to schedule one reviews.
I propose we use the same team we had before.
Um. I know I interviewed Land use previously.
Why I said that.
Beth interviewed Land use and not sure if Jessica did or not. I think she
I think, I think it was Jessica.
I think it was on Ross. That. Jessica.
All at once or?
Um, yeah, we met all together to interview him as opposed to doing it one at a time. We can do it. We did some, when it was the three selectmen interviewing, we did serial interviews because we couldn't all at once. Um, but when we interviewed for treasurer, accountant, um, we did all with the team.
It was easier, I thought.
Yeah, with the team that at one time.
Well, we checked with the, with the respondents to find out if they're okay with that.
Okay, then I will touch base with, I think both Beth and Jess are in tomorrow.
Okay.
I will touch base with them and make sure they're comfortable doing that going forward. And then when I, I will you, you've already gotten a copy of the first resume. If they're okay with it, I will forward it to them as well.
Okay, all right. That sounds good.
Um, likewise, the veterans agent um, position, uh, we're going to be posting, um, uh, after conversations with Pepperell and Ashby um, and looking unfortunately at our respective budgets. Um, there, there is not sufficient funding for us to do a district and hire a full-time veterans agent for the district. Uh, the, the estimate, estimated cost of that would be probably north of fifty thousand dollars total for the three towns. And I think our total, our total budget for the three towns right now is less than twenty. Um, so I think we're going to be in the same boat that we were before. Both towns are still interested in trying to have one person do do it. So an unofficial district part working, part time in each town. Um, um, so, uh, the other towns are going to post it and mentioned in their posting that this is a potential shared job with Ashby and Pepperell and Townsend.
Part time.
Part time in each.
And to see where veterans agents.
You know, I think we have over six thousand dollars budget for ours. And Pepperell has more because they're closer to both. They have a larger population. We, Ashby has less. They have a smaller population, so.
So just curious, then the veterans agent, we get three different paychecks?
Yes.
Interesting.
That's what Joe, that's what Joe did it. About three separate paychecks, three separate part-time paychecks from three separate towns.
Yeah, you're right, six thousand seventy-five dollars.
Yeah. So that the I believe it would be a benefit to have a full-time agent, but it's, it's hard to, we, we, we would probably as a town need to come up with twenty thousand dollars about to, to fund it.
Right.
And then Ashby would have to come up with ten and Pepperell would probably come up with twenty-five. It would probably, and that's and I don't think any town, any, any of the three of us are in a position to, to do.
And which town will handle the benefits?
Right. Well, I think that would be, the, the, the idea would be that would be including
Within, okay.
Within that amount, it would be including those benefits, but it's just a
Like a personal services contract type thing?
Well, if you, if you, there's a, there's a state statute that allows you to create a district and that district is one town handles the the kind of the person is an employee of one town in the district. And we have a, they have a municipal contract, municipal contract where we write them a check, but it's just not anywhere, unfortunately. I mean, if we yes, you know, I wish, I wish they would, but it's not. So we'll, we'll be posting that as a part-time position um, as it was posted. I think the last time it was posted was back in two thousand seven or two thousand six.
Something like that.
Joe started in January two thousand seven, I believe. So, um, we'll, we'll post it again. Um, uh, as a part-time position. Um. One thing I did want to bring up was, um, something that a, a, a possible amendment to the constable policy, which was adding a fee. Um. Um, most cities and towns that we've investigated, charge a fee for their constable applications. Um, uh, it, it ranged from, you know, seventy-five dollars, you know, on the low end, fifty, seventy-five dollars on the low end to upwards of two hundred dollars in the high end. Um, and so I want to see if the, the board had any um, appetite for adding a, a fee to the constable application process.
Would that include whatever fee is required to, um, because there was a, um, what was the check for, uh, that they needed to?
For the query or for the DMV check?
Yeah, the DMV check.
I mean, I, I, I do think if we were charging a fee, it would include
It would be used for that.
Used for, for those checks in addition to the administrative work that's on the town.
For all of them.
For the rest of the work.
Right. Um. So it would be amenable to that. So do we want to amend the policy? And, um.
Well, I would just, I'm just throwing out, I would propose that we, uh, that we amend the policy to add a fee of one hundred and fifty dollars. To cover those costs, to cover the costs and the administrative costs in the town over the three years.
Um. Yeah, I would, I would be amenable to that.
And it's a one-time application fee, not an annual fee.
Right.
Just when they apply.
And, and that will make it easier for the checks that need to be done all of that, the time for the staff. All right, so a hundred fifty?
Do you need to vote on that?
Yeah, they should vote on that, absolutely.
Um, and then we'll amend the policy. And, uh, do we need to vote that? I mean, we've done a first reading, second reading. Wait, if we're amending the policy, we can just add an amendment?
Yes, we're just going to add an amendment to add a fee.
Okay, so, um, is there a motion to add a a fee of one hundred fifty dollar, an application fee with a three-year term, single application fee covering the three-year term um, to the constable policy?
I'll make a motion that we add a one hundred and fifty dollar application fee to the consul, uh, constable policy.
Second then.
Um, any further discussion? All those in favor, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Moore, yes.
A sexting Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell.
And that is.
So, um, we need to, so with that vote on the constable, we posted already, correct? Did we post with the, um, fee for we need to take the check? Yeah, and amend. Yeah, I think we need to look at that. So. All right, um. Are we ready to roll with report? Anything else, Eric, before we move on?
For today, that's it.
All right, reports from board liaison. So general government, Teresa, that is you. Anything to report?
Yeah, the only thing I have actually is from the, um, for the board liaison, um, I've been, uh, talking with the conservation committee and we're putting together just a pamphlet to help uh, understanding of wetlands and responsibilities if you have wetlands on your property and how to understand the borders of your wetlands, et cetera. So I've been working with that committee on that. Uh, I'm also, uh, working to get together with the finance committee to, uh, as instructed by the chair, to come up with a financial planning, uh, summary, uh, and following through on that. That's about it.
Um, I will say that one of the, just thinking about finance committee and budgeting for the upcoming fiscal year for the, you know, FY twenty-four, um, I I added today when we met, correct, the, um, uh, budget statement for the next meeting that the board of selectmen has to provide for the department has. So it's time to start thinking about that. I don't know what, what that has to do with the, if it has anything at all to do with the finance committee. So, um, but the budget, uh, statement from the the directive from the board of selectmen is on the meeting for October eighteen.
Right.
Um. How about tournament? Well, if you look in the, in the SharePoint at the October eighteenth agenda, it's in there. So. Sorry, go ahead, Teresa.
That was all I had, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, elected boards, Chad, that is you.
I do not have anything to, to report per se.
All right, um, I, I have for public safety, uh, one is the trick-or-treating days. Uh, we've got the chief's our child today and, um, October thirty-first, six to eight P M, which is the typical Townsend trick-or-treating time um, is perfectly okay. So do we need to vote to do that?
Great, the alliteration you just did. Townsend trick-or-treat time.
Okay, well, anyway.
Typical Townsend trick-or-treating.
All right, so, um, we have voted on that in the past. Do we need to do that, do you think, or is that?
I think it, I think
consensus?
I think as long as every, you might as well take a vote, everybody's here to say, just to set it.
So is there a motion for trick-or-treating?
I will make a motion that we set Townsend's official trick-or-treating time for October thirty-first from six to eight P M.
Second then.
Um, all those in favor, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Moore, yes.
A sexting Duranian, yes.
Right, that's boring to see those.
Well, yeah, important legislation right there.
All right, um, the other thing is that I heard from Chief Shepherd, I'm sure everybody has seen by now, the announcement about the truck that the, um, fire EMS support group is sending to Florida. So, um, it's on the website and it's on Facebook pages. And if you're, um, you have the announcements from the website set up for you at all, you would have received it as well. So they're planning to leave. I can't remember if it's five and six P M tomorrow. Did I put that in the SharePoint? What the?
Yes.
Five, yeah.
Five P M tomorrow. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so, um, anybody that can get, uh, cereal, soups, pastas, canned items, paper products, diapers for all age groups, toiletries, including feminine hygiene products, tarts, gas cans, nails and others, uh, building supplies and household goods. And they're looking for new on this, pots, pans, sheets, pillows, linens and blankets. So anybody that's able to donate, um, you can take them to the central fire station just to, uh, the doors on the side there across from the second denex and they will accept them later. So, um, if you're able to contribute, that would be great. They're not looking for cash donations, they're looking for goods.
Yeah.
So, um, that would be great. And that's a short-term task and that's everything I but, um, which takes us to communications and announcements. So we do have two retirements, so long-time employees, um, to announce. Um, let me get some management. Um. Am I screen sharing still?
You're not.
Okay. Thank you.
Don't say that aloud.
I don't want to work around.
What are you worried about?
Going to give everybody the light that's typically moving around. Um.
No, it's not. Oh, good, so.
Okay, so, um, maybe I should screen share now for announcements of communications. Does that sound good?
Hmm.
Um. No. All right, these are our announcements of communications. So the first is the, um, uh, resignation of Joe Masola, our veterans agent and Lieutenant Mark Giancotti. Um, these are both retirements. So we did, um, slow slide. By the way. All right, so we do have certificates of appreciation with the board of selectmen would like to thank Joseph J. Masola for his fifteen years of service to the town Townsend. Um. We're awarding the certificate on Tuesday, October fourth, twenty twenty-two, and it needs to be signed by the selectman. So, uh, Teresa, you're out of session, I guess, if you can come in to sign.
Yeah, I can come in tomorrow. And I'd also like to just add, uh, uh, if people don't know, Joe had a, a bad reaction to COVID uh, and he's not in the best of health right now. And I, we, we all wish him get well and get to enjoy his retirement.
We are.
I, I would like to read his letter because I think his letter says a lot.
Uh, okay, so do you want me to pull up his resignation?
Sure, I think that's, I think that would be.
Um. I think I can get to it by just sometimes you can error through and sometimes you can't. Um. All right, so is this on the screen?
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
Um, to the towns of Ashby, Pepperell and Townsend Board of Selectmen, I'm submitting my resignation effective September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two because of some minor health issues. I feel that my health is my first priority and spending more time with my family is my second. I have served my country for twenty-three years in the U S Army, twenty-one years of service to North Middlesex School District and sixteen years of service as a veteran service officer. I serve my country, state and local government with dignity and honor. I have helped many veterans in the three towns to receive benefits from the state and federal government. I was very pleased with my results and I'm proud of this. I will still volunteer my services, but on limited basis to help veterans in need. I would also like to thank all of the individuals I worked with in Townsend, Ashby and Pepperell. Respectfully, Joseph J. Masola, Veteran Service Officer. Thank you for letting me do that.
You're welcome. So thank you to Joe. And we also have a card here, Teresa, for, um, uh, Joe. So when you come in tomorrow, please sign that as well. All right, our next retirement is, um, Lieutenant Mark Giancotti. Um, we have a certificate of appreciation for twenty-seven years of service to the town of Townsend. Um, presenting this to Lieutenant Mark Giancotti by the board of selectmen on Tuesday, October fourth, twenty twenty-two. And I believe his retirement date is October twelfth or fourteen. Fourteen, yes. Um, so let me get the chief's. Um. Uh, right here, this is the letter from the chief. Do you want me to read that?
Sure.
Um, please accept this letter as confirmation receipt and acceptance of your resignation slash retirement submitted on September twenty-fifth and effective October fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Congratulations on your retirement and thank you for your dedication in making our mission, vision and values a reality for the citizens we serve. I commend your individual and collective contributions to this department and the greater community and wish you success with your future endeavors. And this is signed, um, sincerely, uh, James T. Sartell, Chief of Police. So congratulations, Mark, on your retirement.
Mark, thank you for your service.
Thank you, and Thank you. And we also have a card to sign for him as well here in town hall. And um I spoke with the chief and so um there, there may be a future just look for future announcements on Mark's retirement. Um, it's not effective until next week, but so. Uh, thank you. Um, we have other, two other resignations to announce. Uh, one is Bonnie Fitzpatrick as the Assistant Recreation Director. And also um I believe it's. Mike Crowley, we've already discussed that as land use coordinator and he is effective seven, we were hoping for the later date. And then we also had a resignation from a committee. This is Mike Barasco from the uh Townsend Affordable House and Trust. So as soon as the trust meets um to host another opening there, there will be an opening there uh for someone from the town specifically with a financial background. That was Mike's um spend. Yeah, so thank you, Mike, for your time on the Affordable House and Trust. So we have those announcements, um uh, the haunted trail. I don't think I have it here. I I do not have the haunted trail.
No, I think it's in communications.
Um, but you can look at, find that on news. The haunted trail is Saturday night. Do you know what time it starts?
Oh, I don't wanna, I think it's five, um, no, it's I think it's seven to, it's a couple hours ago. If you go on the town page. It's right there on the, the link is right there. Up at the very top, yeah.
Seven to nine, seven to nine. I know it's two hours.
Six to nine. Six to nine. Oh. Six to nine, if you want the food trucks or the temporary airbrush tattoos or the balloon.
Don't skip out on the balloon.
So six to nine, for the, for all three hours, you have that. And then from seven to nine, the haunted trail, Magic by Jay, Bach One and the Three Haver. So um, that's at the Townsend Library. Um, and there is also Greg's Run, which.
You buried the lead, right?
What?
Starring. As a guide, right? You'd be a guide. Nobody will know it's me, guaranteed.
Alright, and then there's also, oh, it's not up here, Greg's Run.
Greg's Run is at ten o'clock. It's just for people that don't know, it's def- definitely not a run uh for people that don't run. Uh, though it is a race for people, um, there are different categories. And also at ten thirty, there's a kid ra- uh, child's race uh, as young as two years old. That's my favorite thing to watch on that. That is a run and they even yell out running, running, running. I know, uh, I I've done it with uh two dogs and a and a stroll, um, still haven't broken an hour, you know, it's just not it's not, uh, so don't feel like it has to be a run. Uh, registration opens up at nine. Uh, I will be at registration, so come, come by. And even if you don't want to run or whatever, it is one of the largest um scholarship funds uh for North Middlesex. So uh, it does a great job raising scholarship, so.
Can I, can I jump into and say that? Because you said North Middlesex, I just wanted to say that they were to host last weekend a um a Nesba band competition that was canceled. Um, and for anybody who doesn't know, that is, uh, that was, they, they uh, uh, wanted to be a host community so that they could raise funds. And they had to pay a fee to be able to be a host committee and then they they canceled it. Um, so there are fundraising for the band. Um, if anybody has ever seen the band perform, they're really, really good. Those kids work hard. Um, they, they've done a lot of fundraising and they're, they're gonna need a little extra help because of this cancellation. So if you see anything for North Middlesex Band, please uh reach in your pocket and help them out.
Alright, um, next announcement, there's a community meeting tomorrow night at seven P M. This is on the website. It's on the calendar as well as here. We've talked about that already today, so please attend. We would like everybody's input on that. And then the last announcement is for the Historic District Commission. Um, they have a public hearing on October nineteenth in the Selectmen's Chambers. Um, regarding an application for a certificate of appropriateness submitted by Dason L L C Philip Calametta, the applicant is seeking approval of visual exterior work at the property located at four twenty twenty uh Main Street in Historic District Three. The application is available for review at the town clerk's office. Um, and interested parties are encouraged to attend. Please enter through the front doors of town hall to attend the public hearing. So it is at uh in the Selectmen's Chambers Town Hall, four thirty P M. On um October nineteen.
Yes.
It's just a Wednesday, correct?
Yes.
Alright. And I believe that's all the announcements. Um, our next meeting, so I can stop right there. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, October eighteenth at six P M. We've reviewed the fall meeting dates. Is there a motion to sign payroll and Bill's payable warrants? Um, in or out of session, I guess.
Well, there's two of us.
Make a motion that we review and sign payroll and Bill Warren's out of session.
Second.
Oh, um, how do you vote, Teresa?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Talia. We do not have an consecutive session, right?
Hallelujah.
It's our motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn that, make a motion that we adjourn at eight oh one.
I second that.
Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Morris, yes.
Indian, yes.
And Veronica Talia. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.